I think it's a repeat of what we already have. Ready? Should I wait much longer? Not like he's gonna be missing anything. Okay, I will call the Monday, December 3rd, 2018 meeting of Dublin City Council to order. Chris, could you lead us in the pledge?
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Ian, could you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Here.
Mr. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Aludo?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
John is on his way. Citizen comments, we don't have anybody that has signed in, but if anybody in the audience would like to make a comment on an item that is not on our agenda, you simply raise your hand and we'll listen to whatever you have to say for five minutes. Seeing no hands, we will move right along under the consent agenda and make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 19th, 2018 city council meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Mr. Keenan? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Second reading on ordinances, ordinance 87-18, Anne?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. Stifler?
Good evening, council. At the first hearing on this ordinance, a information on the amount of operating capital-related expenditures from this ordinance was requested and that information was provided in an information-only memo. I'm available to answer any additional questions.
Any questions from council?
I had one, just one quick one. Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. Under the operating funds, the 334, 185 of that was for legal services and professional fees. Of that, about 150 for professional services. Can you remind me, please, what that is for?
Sure. Those are for services related to basically property acquisition, and in this case, it's all related to the Tuttle Crossing property acquisition, the appraisal fees, the negotiation fees for those properties. That's what makes up that amount.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I had...
Hello? Chris?
I had one. Sorry, I'm trying to use my new system here, so if I'm a little slow, forgive me. So, on page two of two of the ordinance itself, I'll make it bigger so I can actually see it. It talks about refunds and conditional occupancy of $180,000.
Which section?
I am on section six. From the... Sorry, my little thing is covering it up. I haven't learned how to move the note yet. But the agency fund, I think it might be, that part's cut off. It's under refunds, it says conditional occupancy, it's $180,000. Can you describe what that conditional occupancy is?
Yeah, I could speak to it generally. You put in a deposit, I think they're usually $5,000, but I think they vary sometimes to the size of the project as far as when you're requesting a building permit. It's part of that process, the conditional occupancy comes in. That's part of an agency fund, so there are revenues to offset all of those expenditures. And those are sometimes difficult to budget because you don't know how many of those you're gonna have in any given year. As far as what that amount is comprised of, I don't have that information.
So these are folks that have, maybe are in the construction process somewhere along the way, and they have obtained conditional occupancy. And what would trigger a refund of that? Then they maybe haven't met the threshold to occupy. I'll tell you what, I think we... Well, that's our second hearing, isn't it? Second reading. Sorry, I was not here at our last meeting. Okay, moving on to my last question then is, there's a refund for the Bridge Park New Community Authority. How did we arrive at a refund for that entity?
This might address your other question as well. So anything that goes into an agency fund is not the city of Dublin's. So, for example, if somebody puts a deposit down on, probably an easy example would be, if you're renting a facility, that, in most cases, we refund that back to them. So, all of the funds here are monies that have come into the city that are not ours unless certain circumstances happen. So, in the case of the Bridge Park New Community Authority, that is simply the monies that we are collecting that they are levying on the hotels there. We're just the intermediary, pardon me, because we are collecting the bed tax revenue, so they, those hotels add that on to what they remit to us. We don't want that going into the city's general, any sort of general revenue, so that's why it sits in this agency fund, because it's not ours.
It's more about distribution and a refund.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, the same thing, I don't know the intricacies of the conditional occupancy, but that is coming in, and I imagine it's just a temporary holding place until something, some other action is done that we have to turn it back over to the original applicant. We can certainly follow up with that.
That one just caught my eye because it was a relatively big number. That's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions? Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Ordinance 88-18?
Establishing appropriations based on the 2019 operating budget of the city of Dublin.
Angel?
Good evening, members of council. This ordinance before you this evening appropriates the dollars that were approved as part of the 2019 operating budget, which you approved at our last meeting. So we are requesting approval this evening so that January 1st of 2019, the funds will be appropriated in the appropriate accounts.
Any questions from council?
I had a general question, probably should've asked it earlier, but... So, this appropriation allows the expenditure of these fees, is there any dollar limit to any individual contract in an operating sense that would have to come back before council, before it could be distributed?
Well, we have our purchasing requirements, I believe some of those are outlined in the charter. We have administrative orders as far as what you need to get three quotes on, what you need to formally bid. So there are parameters from that.
On the capital side, but on the operating side? Or is it irrespective of which fund?
It's really capital, but anything over $75,000 that, yeah, would be a construction base would have to be formally bid. But we are also looking on our end regardless, I mean, professional services, that's really hard to gauge whether, you know, we trust that the departments are looking towards the best and lowest costs when they're evaluating what vendors to be utilizing. For other, you know, less than $5,000 operational purchases, we don't look for quotes, but anything above that, we do look for that documentation to be submitted when departments put their requisitions in to our financial system.
So that $75,000 threshold holds for professional services, any contract?
No.
Just on construction?
Contract authority comes to the city manager. So in terms of purchasing large products or commodities above the amount, the bidding threshold, we would bring those back to approve the bid. Part of that process is to authorize the contract, professional services contracts, we do not bring back to council for execution or authority.
There are some issues with the .gov or whatever, the auction?
Yes, yeah, that's like a commodity sale, so you would need to, under the law, declare those as surplus and no longer of public value. And then, as a result of that, we would provide you that list, and then as a result of that, then we would put those out on, gov deals as an example for sale.
There's a purchase side of that as well?
There is, yeah. We participate in various state cooperative purchasing agreements, so they will negotiate a dollar amount for certain goods or services, and then we buy off that state contract as opposed to going a different route.
And there's two agencies for that. One is state purchasing, and then the other one is the swap for G, swap for government, which is organizations, used to be out of southwest Ohio, now it's statewide.
Again, for my own clarification, so a professional services contract, anything under $75,000 is not, does not require bid?
Even if it's over $75,000, it does not require a bid.
No bid on professional services?
Well, we will, we will, at times, depending on the service, if it's something we don't have much experience at, or we would, we will get quotes, I'll ask department heads and so forth to get quotes, that's in our administrative order or general direction. So we do try to garner a competitive environment when it comes to that. However, in doing that, one of the things we do take into consideration when you're authorizing a professional service, like an engineering service or something like that, is you don't want to start that process over every time. Because in a way, you've already paid for a lot of institutional knowledge around and research around some of your services and so forth, so you want to be careful that you're also not having to pay someone to start that all over again. So all those things are taken into consideration.
There's a large number of those that come before council anyway. You bring to us many of those requests in conjunction with just normal, for professional services.
I guess that's what I'm asking, Mike, or what, sort of what are the guidelines for which, and particularly large ones, certainly not talking about small ones, certainly not necessarily talking about what I would call repetitive ones. But I know there's a, the process is quite set forward for capital. I'm just curious about what the thresholds are on the professional services, because it does create a competitive opportunity, I think, to have that. But I understand your perspective on that. I was just wondering what dollar amount?
Why don't we share with you, why don't we get back to you and share with you our process and procedure and map that out for you so you can see how that...
And again, Dan, I'm just talking about the specifically large ones, that would be great. Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, you want information about how we do those, not those that are beneath the bid threshold and/or those that are professional services?
Yeah, and below the bid threshold, maybe not necessarily, but the larger professional services. And as we've continued to develop and do things, there's a lot of those. And I'm just interested in what our process is on some of those. So, thank you very much, and I apologize, I should've asked that earlier in the cycle and I'd have it in those...
That's a great question, we've got...
Forgot about it, and so...
You've got processes and procedures mapped out.
I'm sure, great, thank you very much.
Any other questions? John, you got anything? Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Introduction, first readings on ordinance, ordinance 89-18, Anne?
Res zoning approximately 8.68 acres southwest of Jerome Road, approximately 1,000 feet south of the intersection with McKittrick Road from R Rural District to PUD, planned unit development district for 18 single-family lots and 2.08 acres of open space and a preliminary plat in accordance with the subdivision regulations.
I will introduce it. Claudia?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Before your ordinance 89-18 is a rezoning of 8.6 or so acres in the northern section of the city for, like Anne mentioned, 18 lots. I'm sorry. We usually start off our presentations, especially with planning and zoning commission, that are a little bit newer in their jobs with our process slides, so that is what is before you. And we are really at step two here, which is the rezoning, which creates legislation for this acreage. And then, once approved by city council at the second reading and the 30-day referendum period, the applicant would be able to file for final development plan, which would be at Planning and Zoning Commission. Here is a larger area of the site, which is outlined in yellow, it is just north of Torton West. And there is a stop street off of Corazon Drive, which is Roma, that stubs into the site. And then, a little bit closer here, at the time that Torton West was planned, that street stub was envisioned to provide access to that site and also to sites further to the north. Everything that is outlined, sort of in the shaded color, is not within the city's jurisdiction currently. For the community plan, we are looking at a mixed residential rural transition future land-use map, which has a typical density of 1.5 units to the acre. What is proposed here tonight is about two units to the acre. And the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending approval of that little increase in density to you tonight, as well as they saw a informal for this particular development and felt as though that a lot of the quality and the character that was proposed here validated that slight increase in density. Here is the proposed preliminary development plan. We are looking at an existing home that is to the, it's kind of to the west, there on my map is a little bit skewed, but there are 17 home sites proposed that are to be platted, single-family homes, for an empty nester type of clientele that the applicant can speak to tonight. But the owner of the land, as well as the developer, are retaining that house there to the east, west, I'm sorry. So we're looking at a rezoning for the entire 8.68 acres from R, which is our rural district, to a planned unit development district with establishing legislation and rules and regulations for this particular site. 18 single-family lots, which would include that estate lot, that is the existing home. Two public streets extending Roma Drive into the development and extending it north to provide access if there were ever to be future development, as well as a cul-de-sacs public street, which would be Hamlet Court, to provide access to all of the lots as well as to the estate lots. And then, the applicant is also proposing two approximately acres of open space. We're looking at two sub-areas. In the yellow is Subarea A, which is the estate lot and the open space around it. And then, in the orangey color is Subarea B, which is what is considered to be cluster lots. So they are 5,000 square foot lots that are fairly narrow and fairly short, but that would fit the houses as proposed with rear yards, side yards, and higher lot coverage, but again, make up for that with open space. From an architectural standpoint, the applicant and staff have been working with a builder specifically, and there are basically two types of homes proposed. So A and B are on the south side and the east side, and then C is there on the north. Village character, and the applicant can speak to that as well, but the intent is for them to be one-story, one-and-a-half-story, lower maintenance types of homes. From an open space perspective, the applicant is providing two reserves. There is a reserve on the Manly Road frontage, as well as where there is an existing pond, and that will be changed to accommodate stormwater management there in the center of the site. So in total, there is about two acres of open space that is owned by the city, like it typically is within the city, and then maintained by the HOA. The city would maintain the functionality of the pond. And then, if you've read the staff report, as well as the discussion of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've had some concerns about the maintenance of the individual lots, because there is a lot of HOA maintenance that is included within the development, especially because it is an empty nester type of product. And we've asked the applicant to provide more of an illustration as to what is maintained by the HOA versus what is maintained by the individual homeowner, and they have done that. So we have a couple of conditions that speak to that as well, if you look at that record from the Planning and Zoning Commission. One of the things that we have honed in on a little bit more, because it's somewhat unusual, is that there are areas that are under common maintenance for HVAC areas, and they are outlined here with some details in those plans. And from an open space standpoint, it is intended to be more naturalized, it is intended to be not active, it's not going to be the playground or anything like that, but it is walking, sitting, and again, accommodating stormwater management. And so with that, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we ended up with 14 conditions. And in this slide, and in my memo as well, I've outlined the ones that have been met, which are in italics here, and then the ones that are in the bold font that will need to be met at the final development plan stage. So there are certain things that we can't take care of at this point in time, but we are assuming that they would be taken care of at final development plan. So in this instance, we are still waiting on four and six, and then nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Everything else has been taken care of. And with that, the Planning Commission is recommending approval of this proposal before you at your January meeting, your first meeting in January. And we are requesting two motions. We are doing a rezoning preliminary development plan, as well as a preliminary plat. So the plat conditions, which there are three, have all been met with the plans you have in front of you tonight. The applicant and their team are here, if you have any questions? I am here, obviously. If you have any questions, so...
Obviously, you are here, Claudia. Let's go, first things first, does council have any questions of Claudia before we move on to the other people who wish to be heard? And just to make sure that everyone's aware of the process, did you have a question? Jane? Go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for you, Claudia.
Sure.
In reviewing this more in-depth, I had a couple of concerns about not only the density, but the parking. As I read through the development text, it said parking would only be, could you clarify where parking is allowed on the street?
Yeah. So, I'll use this map here for example. So the, what the zoning code would require, the development accommodates two spaces in each garage, as well as two spaces in each driveway. And then, there is parking permitted on one side of the street. So every time there is a hydrant, that would not be permitted to have parking on it, but the other side of the street would be.
How many parking spaces do you think that would accommodate? How many cars do you think would be on one side of the street? Because I see only six houses, so, or six units, so, and you're not allowed to park at intersection. So you would be only parking on this north side where the 125? Is that what you're saying, that parking is allowed?
Yeah, so the lot sizes are 45 at a width? And that would probably accommodate two cars?
Two cars, so...
What's the drive width on those, about 22 feet? Say that again, I'm sorry.
What is the driveway width? So you couldn't park in front of a driveway? So, you would be limited to maybe 22 feet per...
It might be 16 or 18, but yeah.
Ish. Usually it's a 16-foot door.
Garage, exactly.
And then normally, there's an additional couple of feet on either side. So you're probably in the 20-foot driveway of the 45-foot lot. You probably lose 20 feet of that and maybe a few more, probably 25 with the apron.
Okay, so, so I guess my intention of asking the question here is, you know, the concern of planning and zoning was the closeness of the units and parking, these are the things that came up. So as I continue to look at this and study the plan some more, with 17 units here and only parking, especially when you have driveways, I'm a little concerned about the ability to park adequately for the residents that are here, as well as, it's only on one side of the street. So, I'm assuming that if you can park on one side of the street, you still have the ability for two cars to pass, or no? Just one, if it's only wide enough for two cars? Is that correct?
It ought to accommodate a car waiting and then another car passing.
In other words, you can have stock two-way traffic? Okay. But, okay, so is, were there any, so that's one of my, that's one of my concerns, is parking. The second one is the HOA. I know we asked them to look at who pays for what. So, as, in reading in the development agreement, or the preliminary development plan, my understanding is that the homeowner is to pay for all fences, screening walls, retaining walls, and pillars on their property. But there are retaining walls in between the properties, and they're shared. So how does that work?
I'll let the applicant maybe shine a little bit of light on there, but in this particular instance, we've asked the applicant to provide a graphic that shows better as to what is maintained by whom. And in this particular instance, it appears as though, even though there are platted lots, like single-family lots, the maintenance is very much like it is in a condo type of setup. So in this particular graphic, they are showing the pink areas being maintained by each individual homeowner.
Okay.
And then those hatched areas between the lots, maintained by the HOA, as well as the green areas.
Certainly not the air conditioning units, though.
Not the functionality of the unit, but what's around the unit.
Okay. And the estate lot does not participate?
Correct.
In the HOA? So my other question here is this. Design guidelines, oh, what just happened? Okay. Design guidelines are adhered to by the 17 lot, 17 units.
Correct.
But they are, but the HOA protections that one would have for the 17 units, do they apply or not apply to the estate lot?
They would not apply.
They would not apply. Although it did say that if there's alterations made to the estate lot home, that some guidelines have had to be adhered to, but there's no design review committee.
Well, it would be, I was gonna say, it would be under the, under the code, but it's not, because the house was built before the code, actually.
So, in studying this, here's where I struggle. It's being brought forward as a planned unit development encompassing eight acres and allowing for a higher density based on the eight acres. But what I see happening is that three acres are being, excuse me, carved out and being treated as if it's just one partial. And the remaining burden on the other five acres is now at three units per acre, not one and a half. It's one thing if the estate lot was treated the same as all the others within the PUD under the same design guidelines, under the same HOA design guidelines, but what's really happening, I feel, as I've looked at this more closely, is that the estate lot is being carved out and just being kept as a single-family unit, and the burden of the density is just on the remaining five acres. Therefore, you have twice as much density, and in the plan approval criteria for a preliminary development plan, one of the things that the community plan asks us to do is to conform to density requirements. We are somewhat con... We are somewhat conforming if you take the whole eight acres, but this three acres I have a problem with is actually not being asked to abide by anything on the remaining five acres. So they don't pay for any of the other, the burden is all put on five acres, so therefore it's a five-acre planned unit development. That's how I'm beginning to look at it. So those are the things that have come up sort of for me. And I quote that under our code of 153.055, and that would be under number 10 criteria. That would be one of them. And then number eight is the traffic congestion with the parking because of the five acres only has, or this area only has so very little parking for those. So even though planning and zoning and the architecture is lovely and the green space is very accommodating, I think, I'm struggling with this separation of the three and five acres.
Actually, an excellent question. Jane, what's the density of that three acres is not counted?
So the estate lot, which is shown there in the yellow subarea, that would be a density of one unit to three acres. And then in the pink or orange color, we are looking at three units to the acre.
And that, none of these people that live in any of these homes can go take a walk on that yellow parcel part?
That is correct.
That's all, that's maintained, that's still the estate. That's their private property.
Correct.
Claudia, I'm sorry, Jane, are you finished? Kathy, would you like to go?
I'll just have a quick question while we're talking about that. The pond, are there walking paths around that particular light brown section of the open space?
At this point, we don't have those types of details, just because it would be developed at the final development plan stage.
Is it planned?
It's not at the moment.
So it's a smaller amount, really?
It's even smaller than that.
Yeah. The green space then that we're talking about is really, I don't know which direction I'm looking at here, but the end to the right from where I'm sitting, I don't know my orientation here. But that really is the shared, that really is the open green space that we're talking about then, right, Claudia?
Yeah, so there is a walking path on, where Roma Drive sort of dead ends right now, there is a path going eastward through that open space and out onto Manly Road. That is planned.
But if you live in one of these end units down on Roma Drive, to the right of Roma Drive, you have no reason to walk down to the end of the street, do you?
Right.
Was that your point?
That was, and that's what I was just trying to understand, if that pond became an active space or not, and really was green space, but at this point, that is not, as you understand it, a planned part.
And again, we would typically work out these details at final development plan stage. There might be benches, there might be paths, but in terms of it being a paved path, that's not very likely at this point.
Anything else, Kathy?
No, thank you.
Chris?
I have a couple of questions. So the front of each of the homes is allowed, permitted to have a 40% coverage of garage.
That's correct.
So nearly half of all of these units on the street will see garages. I saw there was a tree survey in here, and the second half of the tree survey just said "tree" and a size. It didn't say whether it was an oak or maple or whatever. Did we research this for landmark trees? Some of the tree calipers indicated that they might be trees of age, but without knowing the species, it would be difficult to determine.
Right. So at this point in time, the applicant has not indicated that they would be doing anything but replacing them per code. Usually, that's a final development plan type of information that we gather. At the preliminary, we ask for a preliminary tree survey.
There seem to be quite a few large trees that were planned to be removed, and I'm wondering, given all of this acreage, and we're only using a small portion of the acreage, why we didn't design around some of those existing trees or make a little bit more attempt? I see a lot of areas where there aren't trees at present that aren't being utilized, and we are utilizing areas that do have large trees of good quality. Some of them are highly desirable trees. So I'm really not very encouraged by the site planning piece. We seem to disregard the natural features and the drainage to many respects as well. So the pond, I didn't ask this question until today, so I assume we might not have the answer yet, but this is a first reading. So the power and the aerator are supplied by the city as well as all of the pond maintenance. I can't support this largely because this is essentially a private pond. There are 18 units. If we build a pond in this city that we aerated and we provided the power and we treated for every 18 residential units in this city, there would be nothing left for our operating budget. That's all we'd do. So this is a huge expense, a huge burden to the city. Its benefit, you could argue, maybe is for two, three, four, five, maybe homes, and it's really expensive. I've asked Megan to assemble what the cost of that roughly is. And basically, so, you know, the city's going to be burdened for their drainage solution in perpetuity. And I don't think that that's judicious of us to accept that burden on behalf of the balance of the city. So I don't know that we've really designed this in the best fashion for the taxpayer.
If I may, just on that, on that point, not opining or suggesting either way regarding this case, but the one thing the city has done over the last few years is take on more and more relative to the actual operations of stormwater retention, not so much when we can avoid reconstruction and that sort of thing of these retention ponds, but there have been cases where we've taken over the actual aeration and operations of some of the stormwater system. So when we respond to your question that you submitted earlier today, we'll try to give you a sense of that. And that's been, I can't say that's necessarily been cookie cutter or consistent across the board, but as issues have been raised and hardships occur, and this is probably an attempt to try to stay ahead of that situation. But it should be looked at relative to their ability to fund it, too. So I totally get that.
I just don't feel for the number of units and the expense is going to be out of balance. I don't know that that's the practice we want to get into because that's going to be increasingly burdensome, you know, the next property to the, not to the north, it's what, to the sort of northwest, maybe. You know, there's a lot of property out there that's probably going to develop in this same kind of fashion, and if we do this repetitively and it becomes our practice, I think it will become problematic.
Not defending that, just making you aware of that. We'll get you more information.
And then my last question. So Claudia, could you back up? I think it's maybe three slides where it was just two houses next to each other. It was a larger view of, maybe one more if you could. Okay. Maybe not.
I'm not sure.
Oh, this one, yeah. You know, typically these, I'm going to write on this thing here for a minute. Typically, these corridors, maybe I'm going to, these corridors here get to be very unsightly because normally, in a 10-foot area between two buildings, you can't really grow a stand of turf. And what ends up ultimately happening is they get mulched or gravelled or something that is maybe a little bit unsightly. So oftentimes, what you'll see a cluster home kind of community like this do is they'll put in a wing wall on opposite directions similar to this. And what it does is it breaks up the visual nature of looking down the corridor. There was some talk about stone columns and through the meeting minutes. I didn't see any stone columns in the renderings, and so I'm wondering, are there proposing wing walls at the ends of these units or?
A couple of things. These little squares here, and I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer, but these little squares are intended to show those columns. That would be an option for a homeowner. It's not a requirement, but it's an option to be there. And then this white line here would be this sort of wall as you're stepping down toward the AC unit. So it is intended to be walled off so that you wouldn't see necessary that unit or landscaping or mulch in that area. That's the intent. And then, as you can see, it is also intended to go across the property line and meet both building walls.
Well, that would make it awfully difficult for whoever needed to replace that air conditioning unit.
Right.
I would suggest that if they were going to do something of that nature, that they would do a wing wall that, you know, went three quarters of the way at the end of each, so you could still pass through on foot and get through there as you've had to to service whatever might be there, rather than having this entire area be unsightly. Because although it does depict grass and plants here, particularly the way this alignment is, it would get virtually no sunlight through there, and they would all end up being either gravelled or mulched, so.
Yeah, that's certainly one of the details we've struggled with the most.
And then, conditions, let's see, I believe it was number 14. It looked like we were trying to change the sanitary alignment to impact the existing, to reduce the impact of existing trees. How did we fall out with that? Where are we?
Yeah, so we had the homeowner, and I might be able to use this slide, but the homeowner that is, sorry, I really need a pointer. The homeowner that is right here has structures in his yard, and when Tartan West was planned, the intent was for this site to be absorbed into that development, and his yard was accommodating stormwater management for that. And the gentleman was at Planning and Zoning Commission with a plan as to how he wanted the utilities layout, and staff as well as the applicant have been out there numerous times at this point to meet with him and figure out where that sanitary line ought to be to minimize structures in his yard as well as minimize tree removal. There will be tree removal to get the line in there, but the resident is happy now, and...
So there's nothing out on Roma Drive?
Right, exactly. Yeah, so, yes, they're happy, we're happy.
Those were my initial questions, awaiting some of the information that I just asked for today.
Okay, any other questions from counsel for Claudia?
I have one more.
Okay.
And that is this. If the plan goes through as the site plan is laid out, and in the future, the estate lot is sold off, under what parameters or what criteria would that parcel then be subject to? Would it be treated the same as the two-point units on an acre, or would it be treated as R1?
It'd be treated as R1, but under the planned unit development. So the planned unit development has standards for that lot, but they defer to R1.
Right. So in other words, I guess what I'm asking is, if the rest of the property wanted to be developed similar to the east side of the property, could it be, or no?
No, not unless they went back to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as City Council to increase density and increase the number of units that could be on that parcel.
Okay, so it would always stay as an estate lot?
Yeah.
So Claudia, just for clarification on this, in this particular PUD, there would be two zonings within here, an R1 zoning and a...
Two subareas, yes. One subarea that has the R1 zoning and one subarea that has the standards for those cluster lots.
And where does that, the retention pond sit?
It is in SubArea B, which would be the one with the cluster lots.
But there are...
So if you look at this map here, that shows you where the two subareas are.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay, a couple of people have signed in to make public comment, remembering, we do have another hearing on this on January the 8th. The first is Dwight, is it McCabe?
We're all here, we're just here.
Okay, well, does anyone have any, and then I have Dan Loren's, is that the same situation?
Yeah.
You guys want to appoint a spokesperson and come on up? And if you could, you can say whatever it is you want to say, and then address the parking, the HOA, and the pond deal, and then the density, if you would.
Okay. So Dan Loren's, 9341 Jerome Road, I'm the property owner and developer. And I have with our team with us, our civil engineer, Ben, our landscape design, Todd, Dwight McCabe, who is our, kind of our architectural design person with the Hamlet Concept, his family used to own the property before we bought it. Then we have the Corinthian Joe and Kevin from Corinthian Homes, they're our proposed builder. And we have Keith, who is our, their designer. And then behind that, we have John Kirk, who's our sales guy. So my wife and I have bought this property in 1996, '97, moved in in 1998. We rezoned to Dublin 10 years ago, in 2008, and when development had been built around us. And we had, you know, just like most of us our age, looking for the future and what we want to do on this property. We grew up, had our kids grow up there, and it was a great experience. But now we face, you know, too much land to maintain and a big home, so what do we want to do, you know, like many people in Dublin. You know, when we move out of Dublin, what do we want to do, right? And so we have a lot of our friends who are similar situation. We said, why don't we build a community that's, you know, the empty nesters, rather than people living in Dublin? And so we attempted, this is our attempt, to create a great environment that's where people can stay and live in Dublin that would love being here, and it's affordable. So a year and a half ago, I approached John Kirk and said, what do you think? And so we started the planning process, came to Planning and Zoning for Informal last May, got favorable feedback. This is great, this is exactly what we're looking for. So we went out and invested $100,000 in the details of this project to build something we thought Dublin would like. So, and we got favorable feedback. As far as the parking goes, we can get back to you with the specifics, but the intent is, once again, two cars in the garage, two cars in the driveway, at least one car, so two cars can park on the street. You do have that Roma Drive out there. There was some discussion, okay, what if you have a big holiday and all these empty nesters have all their kids come over, where are you going to park? We do think there is some staging, about 300 feet of staging, we can fit another 15 cars on Roma Drive on that over to Corazon Drive. So I think we can get back to you as far as the specifics of how many parking spots there are. As far as shared maintenance, you know, the details, we have worked, staff, they've done a great job advising us of that's a concern that they've faced with other communities. And so we have done what we thought our best job of figuring out that shared maintenance space, and we've, you know, got a lot of details for, given this stage of the development, where we can work with staff and get some more further, you know, details as far as the maintenance. The intent is to have maintenance-free living and to have a good quality environment that's going to be maintained consistently by, you know, a landscape contractor that's going to have, maintain lighting, maintain so that everything looks good and it's, you know, for the appropriate fee, have the landowners have a service that makes sense. have the landowners have a service that makes sense. As far as the trees and drainage, I take exception to your comment about this is not designed very well. I'm a civil engineer, built 6,000 sites, a site development company. We spent a huge amount of time and effort trying to design it. And I would encourage you, welcome out to my home, to see how we've designed around the trees. In fact, up there, I don't have a pointer here, do we? Anybody have a pointer? We had staff out there about three times, looking at the trees, figuring out how we can, how we can save them. So these three trees out here are, quite frankly, are not great trees, but they're big trees. And so we've designed around that, we've made a lot of accommodations to make that work. We're losing a lot of trees. Quite frankly, this whole area where the homes are built is an open field. But we have some trees coming down our driveway we're going to lose, and we have a fair amount of trees around the pond. And quite frankly, we're having to build that pond to meet city standards. I was an Ethon franchisee, have built a lot of condominiums. Understand that drainage is a huge issue with these homes that are close together, and we can't skimp on the drainage. And so what the city, I believe, has learned is that that's where they face the biggest concerns from landowners, is making sure drainage works. And so that's why I believe the city has asked to maintain this pond and make sure that it gets maintained, so there's not a liability down the road with the landowners. So I think that's, once again, a few, it's hard to get a feel on this one-dimensional, two-dimensional sheet of paper, but there's quite a bit of drop-off. There's a lot of details that goes into the grading work around this pond to make it all work, so it's safe. You know, I don't want it to have a too steep of a slope here. So, and it really has to be rebuilt. And we built it to what we thought was a safe standard to fit our home, but obviously, there's a lot more drainage coming out of here now, and you've got to make sure it gets built right. The other concerns that we've mentioned, sanitary tie-in, I guess that everybody's okay with that. The other thing was, you know, separation of us from the PU, from the homeowner association. We just thought that was the fairest way to do it. And we can be part of the homeowner association, but I just didn't want the homeowner association to say, well, you guys got, you know, all this property maintained, and you're only paying this amount of it, and we're paying this. So we thought, okay, let's separate the two so that everybody feels like they're being treated fairly based upon the costs associated with that. So just, you know, yeah, we could go ahead and become, it's not a huge deal. My, my, I'm thinking, I just think it might be easier to maintain the right kind of relationship there and have everybody feel like they're being treated fairly, rather than us have a larger area that has to be maintained and they have a smaller area to be maintained, so.
Could you comment maybe on the, so the, and I just want to understand the logic behind it. You know, this density issue. Density, you would think that the density would be over the entire parcel and that the open space would allow the units to be either a lower number or spread apart or whatever, so that all of the units enjoyed all of the property of the development. You know, that's kind of the idea of the density. But the way that it's done here, the three acres and the pond, especially if there's no paths around the pond that encourage people to go down and sit next to the pond and, you know, whatever, spend time out in the green space, it seems as though there's two halves. That all the housing's sort of stuck onto the right half, and all the open space is on the left half, and they're not really supposed to co-mine.
Well, really, a big part of it, so, yeah, it would be better if we could put houses around the pond, right? It'd be more valuable and everything. But the way the drainage is set up, it's just, doesn't, there's no way you can put the pond up here where it's such 20 feet above this, where this pond is, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I guess that, maybe I didn't say it very well, but even if you look at the, if you look at the drawing, it almost goes right down the middle. All the open space is to the left, and that's not common area, correct? That's not area for all of these unit owners?
So there's common area here, there's common area up here.
But the, all the yellow part is not. But the yellow part is counted in the density, but it's not common space.
Correct, that's correct. And that's basically, we decided to do it that way, just we thought, once again, it would, it would reduce the concerns of these people maintaining something that might be perceived as being ours, right? So, so we went ahead and rather than bring back the property back here and have this dead space here, that's on the other, there's a creek right here, right? And it seemed like a natural space to basically separate the two. And it doesn't make, we didn't think people would really, would be valued in this piece of here, maintaining that piece there. So part of it is the concept of, let's, let's have the part that's, you know, really valued, have that be part of this area, and let's not have the piece that's not valued be part of this overall property. And as far as the pond goes, you could, you know, the way, the way this is designed, there is a bench that goes around this whole thing, right? And there, people will be able to walk around that bench. And if we go back to that picture, Claudia, kind of, and what we're trying to create there, basically of the, kind of the stone, and that, this is the feel that we're trying to create here, right? And so they would be able to walk around that, enjoy that pond. Yeah, they're going to have to walk down here, create sidewalks on both sides of the street. Our initial design was not to have all the sidewalks, but we worked with staff, and it was really important to have the safety and the connectivity. So that's what we worked on. We thought, you know, then this area up here, we felt like it was, it was important to connect to the path here. And if you take a bigger picture, you have kind of blowout, and there's some picture of the kind of area around it.
Mr. Lorenz, we need to, we can't pick you up on the mic.
So this whole area around here is also, you know, common area, okay? That's part of this carton west, right? And so there's these, there's walking paths over here, walking paths here. It just seems like that would be something that's going to be attractive to this, to these people here also. So, you know, kind of taking a bigger picture, you know, it's, it is, you have that area, so it just seems like that's something that's going to be an amenity that I think needs to be considered when you look at this whole, the whole big picture of this.
So you're suggesting that around the lake, you're going to put slab boulders, as in this picture?
Yes.
So you can, boulder to boulder all the way around the lake? So that's going to form the edge?
Yeah, there's going to be, let's go back to the picture. The idea is to have, create a place where you can sit down and then, and have, you know, a relaxing view of the pond and sit.
So the picture to the lower right is what is going to surround the lake, in other words?
No, it's not going to be around the whole lake. There's going to be, there's going to be parts of it that are going to be, and we haven't got to that level of detail, but there's basically going to be areas here, you know, just the areas around where you're going to have that, that kind of feel to it. So we don't, we don't think there's going to be enough, there's going to be the need or the want, desire to have, to go through that kind of expense to, to put that kind of, you know, create a continuous wall around, around the lake.
So is the sod just going to come down to the water edge then, in some areas, is that what you're thinking? Or is it going to be gravel, or what are you thinking for material? Or haven't you thought that?
We haven't gotten far, this, this basically shows grass. That's what we have now at the, at our lake, is grass. We have grass there, rather than putting a rock around it. We haven't got that level of detail yet. We certainly could provide that level of detail if that was important.
So Claudia, the area that he was talking about, that's sort of to the southeast of this, is dedicated green space as part of Corazon?
Correct.
Okay.
Todd, anything else you want to add? Dwight, name it.
Maybe just one thing, what am I? I could go back to the separation between the units. Now Dwight McCabe. There's been, sometimes you get kind of locked onto a topic that just kind of goes down a squirrel and it's kind of tough to get out of. And I, and I keep feeling like we've, we've sort of done that here. So I might offer a little different view of maybe how we move forward with that discussion. I definitely agree with that space in between. In fact, I, it was an obsession of mine for a while. I'd be driving down streets of different communities, and I'd take pictures of the, between the house. Because I hate that space between the house. I think from a zoning point of view, we create that. So I don't care if it's five feet wide, 10 feet wide, even 20 feet wide. It's land that doesn't get used well. And so looking at that in a way that actually gives you something, if you use it a little better. What, what we've always thought, when you're going to move houses together, is you really want to break that separation all the way from the street. So if you go back to the elevations, the house elevations, if you don't mind, what, what you barely see here, you talk about the wing wall separators, and I get that. That's exactly the mindset we have. But for these houses, what we're most interested in is creating a layering from the street. So immediately, as you're at the sidewalk and you think about a house that's, you know, when they're a little denser and they're a little closer together, what you want to do is create a real walkable place on the street itself. And so to do that, when they're a little tighter together, because you don't have that kind of wide separation and kind of feeling like you're out in the open, you want to make it a little more intimate. So that's really this idea of doing some walls that are a little closer up to the sidewalk that bridge that gap. And then, you can go back to the separator, the other plan again. Then when you get behind that layer here, and what doesn't really show on this plan well, but it's there, is if that, if that wall extends to, say, the property line here, then behind that wall, what we want to see is actually planting material just at the front edge of the housing unit themselves. So you really won't see, you want that to grow up. You don't want people to see that space in between. What you want to see is a continuation all the way down the sidewalk of something that's got interest, whether it's a building face, it's landscaping, the next building face landscaping. And so, kind of protecting that view, we see happening out here. As, you know, so that's accomplished from a streetscape point of view. Then when you get down in here, again, there's a lot of discussion about maintainability and those sorts of things. This, this is a solution that kind of evolved. There's other ways to think about this. These buildings, if you think about the elevation here, and then on just that south side. These are, these are the lots that exist on the south side, because it slopes. So those south side units actually have a walkout basement. The units to the north don't, the units to the, essentially, the east don't. And so you look at, what's the fall between here and there? So it's about eight, eight feet of fall. So the question becomes, is eight feet to walk up a hill, and what are these units? About 110 feet in length? So 110 feet to go up eight feet is, is not a, it's not a grade you can't handle. But what the thought was, is if we actually lessen the slope on the upper end and have a more increased slope at the southern end, then somebody is coming to maintain those HVAC equipment. They don't have as steep of a transition to make. So if you think about the scale of these units, and what that unit, that, that piece of equipment looks like you have to replace it every 20 years. I think, my, my house, about 35 years old, still kicking. That's, that's a two-man job. Two people pick it up, and they hike it up the hill, and they bring it back down. So whether that's done by just a gradual slope, whether that's done with a little bit of stepping stones in there, that's probably not the bigger issue. To me, frankly, I'm a little concerned about having, having that piece of construction kind of in there that crosses that property line boundary. So for, for my way of thinking anyway, I could see doing a little bit, just to help change that slope. I could see doing it because it's another layer of kind of hiding that piece of equipment from the street. Plus, it's also a bit of a sound block element, too. So it's kind of good to have a little bit of something in there to make all this happen. I think we're just trying to do a little much in that area. So if we can focus on making sure, from the streetscape point of view, you don't have that kind of in-between space that people have to look at and deal with, that's, that's primary objective one. Objective two is make it simple for a homeowner to maintain their equipment back there. We'll get there, there's an answer for that. But, you know, sometimes you just, you got to, you got to think about this, these kinds of things a little further. Okay. Any other, thank you.
Any other questions?
So just for clarity, you know, I like what you're saying about breaking off the corridor space, but, and I could sort of see by your graphic that you showed plant material and then a tree. But is there, have you gotten any farther than that, other than?
On this particular plan, again, getting through the zoning step comes first, and development plan approval gets to that, that granularity level. We've done projects like this elsewhere that have successfully accomplished what we're talking about. So this isn't a first time for us. It really comes down to ultimately, there's been a lot of discussion about the streetscape and the landscaping walls and those kind of things. When we get to a final plan, is the right time to say, what's the real plant material? What's the real conditions to make that right? So some places, we've done these things, it's literally been a wall all the way across the, the face of these units. I don't see that happening here. There's been a little discussion about when to break that up, and when to, can you keep that, not minimalistic, but reduce it a bit, so it's not a ongoing issue if there's homeowner expense and those kind of things. So it needs to be just tailored to the audience and to this particular location.
Yeah, this graphic is pretty much showing plant material. And you're, you just mentioned, you know, sometimes walls, sometimes plant materials, so.
Yeah, a mix.
In this project, you're thinking all plant material, basically, or?
No, I think, we actually showed some walls on the elevations. I'd still like to see some walls there. I think that, that makes sure that it's there forever. So you don't have to think somebody's going to clip it out, and now we've got the problem that we're trying to not have.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Because of the density, and because of the statement I made earlier about the fact that primarily all the density is in the remaining five acres. So is there any reason that you could see in your future design, this goes forward, that, that we can incorporate better uses of the pond space, these green spaces? Earlier on in Planning and Zoning, I think it was a year ago, some of the comments, as I look back on the minutes, were made that there might be a fire pit. It would be a place for people to go, that they would sit around it by the pond. There might be a small dock. These were suggestions made by Planning and Zoning. I think for me, I ask this question because on the surface, I understand this is state lot, but in reality, it feels as if it's a single-family home, and then you're, you're, like I said, you're kind of burdening the remaining five acres. Is there any reason why we couldn't create a more incorporating space to the remaining 17 homes, so that that green space is actually usable space and not just a storm retention pond? It would mean, it would feel more like a planned unit development in totality than it does as if you just said, I want to keep my three acres here and let everybody else live on the other side.
Yeah, see, frankly, Dan would have loved to actually have shrunk his remaining property. So from his point of view, again, he's, he's having to decide, is he going to stay in a large house with he and his wife, or is he going to downsize eventually? So everybody would have loved to have done that. As Dan mentioned, though, the dilemma is, there's actually a stream that comes through here that's a very solid demarcation. And there's, you, you can't touch the stream from a, from a jurisdictional point of view. It has to stay where it is. And so what, what happened is, during the same time of planning, there's new EPA regulations out, they revise their permits. And so actually, the volume of that basin increased because of jurisdictional matters and permitting matters. As it increased, what happens is, you're starting at the low point here, you literally have to build a berm coming off of the stream bed up before you can start going back down for your pond. Then you build your pond, and then you go back up. As Dan mentioned, there's about a 20, 20, 22-foot fall just across that distance. So you've created this really fairly dramatic landscape to be able to physically put in a, the required retention basin. So that's the point of beginning. Everything had to start there, and the basin kept getting bigger and bigger because of the retention requirements. And it also has to pick up for today. There's actually runoff that comes off that property to the northwest. That has to flow all the way through. There's a, there's a storm pipe that goes in here, comes down here. So this not only deals with just this, you talked about a basin for only 17, 18 units. It, it for now, it actually has to address an outfall coming off of here. When this property develops, it will then have to, have to maintain its own stormwater retention, which means this basin is effectively oversized ultimately. But today, it has to be in there. So that's unfortunate, because that works against what, what your discussion and aim would be. Everybody would have loved to, if that, if that stream was back here somewhere, absolutely, this would have come much closer to Dan's front door. It's just physically, there's, you're just unable to do that. So, yep.
Could I ask, John, would you come up for a second? One, I think, thing we were concerned about, quite frankly, is building more structures around the pond, and is that, basically, people who live there would have to pay for the maintenance of all that stuff, right? So our neighbors have all these beautiful things, right? But then they're complaining because they're going to maintain them. So John? So John, you know the clientele better than anybody. That's really, if we really felt like people really wanted to have all those amenities, then we'd probably put them in, but we don't really think they really, that's what they want.
Hi there. I'm John Kirk with Three Max Premier Choice at 8136 Flynn Lane in Dublin, Ohio. Been a real estate agent for 21 years here in the area. And a couple items. First thing about parking. One thing we see with the clientele we have looking for these types of homes, and we have a list of people already signed up who want to know about this project and get into this project already. So we have clientele looking. It's mainly two residents per building. It's not the family of multiple residents and multiple cars. So we see people parking in the garages and things like that. The other thing with the common maintenance is that the biggest problem we see in subdivisions is that when you have, everybody has their own lawn care company and they all show up on different days of the week, different times of the day, and you have equipment parked in front of your house all the time. So this community will have, one day a week, they'll have the maintenance, people show up, do all the yards. Nobody's running a weed whacker at 6 o'clock at night, and so all that traffic also doesn't have to weave in and out of all these things all the time. You also have on the north side courtyard garages, which allow a little bit more driveway space, so you may be in fact be able to get a few more than just two cars in that driveway. But what we're finding in the, in the community is that what people want is a, they don't want the big yards. They're not really looking for amenities because they don't want the amenity cost. They don't want the pools, the old condos with the pools and things like that. So they're looking for a lifestyle. And what we see, I live on a cul-de-sac in a patio home community now, Highland Village in Tarden West. I live on a cul-de-sac that has 12 homes. Never had a car parked, a problem with parking on that street. I've been there five years. We've never had a problem with parking. And these are people that are there, probably, some of them are only there 50% of the time because they're in Florida once the weather turns cold. So you see that type of people coming in to buy this community, buy this product. They're in and out, and in the summertime, they come in, but they also travel, too, in the summertime. So they aren't there 100% of the time. So you really don't run into the parking issues I think you see in a normal subdivision.
Thank you very much. Kathy, do you have a question? Looked like you were, kept trying to get to the mic.
No, I was just, I guess I'm sort of piggybacking a little bit on Jane's comment here. When I look at the overall density, and I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission the first time you guys came through and did a review, and I know we talked a fair bit about density, and I think you've made some density changes from that first, that first time. Yeah, that, the road that goes from the cul-de-sac over to the estate home down there, you know, you think about the, I'm also drawing this thing, to think about the layout of this, this particular space that you mentioned earlier about being not very usable, just the location where it is. Relocation of that road or thinking about that, it seems that that could potentially create opportunities for less density, or am I incorrect in just the topography of that?
We, we, we're on the same wavelength. We would have loved to have that. In fact, we actually had more units up there and when we dropped the unit count, we tried to push more units and spread them. And the problem came back to this basin. So this, what would be the northwest edge of this basin, the slope from here up to this grade is a four-to-one slope, which is the minimum we're allowed to have. So with that, literally, the driveway would be at the elevation of these homes. So there's literally no space left.
And no opportunity to move the basin in another direction or another direction?
No, because again, it's coming up and then back down. And here, it's level with the adjacent and then going down. To get to the expanse you need, plus as it fills up, it grows. So when it rains, it gets deeper and grows. And it has to be at a certain elevation for it to all to work, and that's what this water level is at. So we looked at every alternative. There's also a minimum slope to get from this edge up to the cul-de-sac. We looked at trying to push the cul-de-sac further to the west. We actually had it there, it was steeper. We talked about retaining walls, we talked about all sorts of things, and had to come back to, literally, it's all squeezed in as tight as it can get on that.
So the other alternative is just less building on that lot? I mean, that is the, you're saying that is the only density alternative you see, given the configuration with the land? The only answer would be less units?
And then you get to a no project, where this is definitely, by taking out the last two units. Everybody always talks about density and dollars and how you make the deal work, and we're not being disingenuous here, a loss of another unit, there's no project. No question. It doesn't work.
I have just one more last question. My understanding, and I apologize because I don't read topography the way an expert would, but my understanding is about an eight-foot drop, that these, along the street, there's about a one-foot drop of roof line. Is that correct as you go down to the pond? There's, there was some mention in there that these have sort of a more coming down a slope sense of feeling. It's not flat across, is that, is that true?
Right. And that's generally the lay of the land now. Ben, what's the actual differential from?
You need to, you need to come on up and?
And not so much important for me to know how much, it's just, I guess my thinking here is, is that there is an orientation as you come down the street that you're moving towards this pond, right? Can you see, because you know you're talking, it's a four-to-one slope and the pond is below, can you see the pond from, if you're standing on the street?
We all wish you could, but it's highly doubtful.
So the pond is way below?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it definitely is.
So basically, if you're looking out at the end of the street, you're not going to see anything but the trees, maybe?
You'll see, pretty much across it, there's mature trees further to the west. Yeah, you see that. So, right. It's, and it's, it's.
So it's really kind of separated from the other, from the, it feels as if you're not going to be, it's not as if you're going to look down the street and see this pond and trees and?
Yeah, Dan's not real happy that he, today, you can see from his front door, the pond. Once that berm has to be built here to physically make this size and volume, he won't be able to see his pond from the house either.
So all you really, so what will you see from the end of that cul-de-sac? I mean, maybe midway up that street, what will you see?
You'll see the existing tree line follows the creek that sits there. So all the existing trees that will remain along the creek, you'll see that from at the core. Because once you're at the end of the core, you'll look down into the pond is the view that you'll see. Because there's about 30 feet of fall between.
Could we get your name?
Oh, sorry. Ben Miller, 5120 Pleasant Chapel Road, Newark, Ohio, 43056.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I'm the civil engineer on the project, so I did the utility and grading design.
So there's about a 30-foot drop from?
Rome Road, all the way down to the creek is about 30 to 35 feet.
But then the drop from the cul-de-sac down to the surface of the pond would be about?
It's roughly, if I remember correctly, about anywhere between six to eight feet in that area.
Okay.
Is that a maintainable slope, then, from that back slope heading towards the creek?
Yes, the pond is designed to meet the City of Dublin stormwater design requirements for the pond, which is the four-to-one maximum slopes that Dwight had mentioned earlier.
So it's going to, okay, rise up?
Yeah.
And then the fact that you're going to use that to maintain the pond, is there, do you think there's going to be any effect along the trees that are growing along the creek? Do you have enough room to actually stage that?
Yeah, we actually use the top of the bank of the existing creek as our starting point so we wouldn't affect anything with that natural feature that's through there. And everything's designed to meet the requirements, meaning that there's a 15-foot maintenance berm all the way around the entire pond that is essentially flat. So I know you guys had talked about pedestrian accessibility. You can physically walk around that pond on the site.
This is, this is a little earlier, right with you, and you're a bit of an elevation, it's not as standing, although it's probably at a knee height. And so if you get closer, you probably have to, see, feel yourself as well.
Is this an extra copy of that picture that we can keep?
The fill level on the pond will be about 20 feet lower than the back of curb, right? According to these contour lines, if you count them.
I'm sorry?
The fill line of the pond will be about 20 feet lower than the back of the curb.
As far as the normal pool elevation, so where the water would be, it's 68 feet to the top of the maintenance berm and there's about five feet of storage, so it's around nine to 10 feet from normal water level to?
Are these not one-foot contour lines on the drawing?
They are one foot, yes. You may be looking at the contours that fall below the water level that's sitting on there. Those are much steeper, two-to-one slopes. I mean, I have to look at the drawings, I don't know off the top of my head what it is.
One thing to note on that sketch is there's not going to be an island in the middle of that cul-de-sac. Staff didn't want that for maintenance purposes.
Okay, any other issues for council to address?
It's about 10 feet to the maintenance berm and then five feet of storage, so it's roughly 15 feet.
Back of curb?
From the right-of-way line. So the right-of-way sits higher than the back of the curb. It'll go up to the top of the right-of-way and then back down.
Thank you.
Just one comment on the HOAs. We've been having a lot of problems over the years with existing HOAs that weren't well enough funded, and they come back and their right-of-ways, their green space along the road, their fences, everything else, we want to dump them back on the city because they never had a strong enough HOA to fund their project. And I assume after I looked at this thing, it's $249 a month is what your paperwork said to maintain this. But, you know, back to Dana on this other issue. And these water features, it'd be great if you could maintain your own water feature in the future, or the HOA would maintain it instead of the city, because we would like to get out of that business for any new projects. Just because the expense of paying for the aerators and the crew coming out, and after 10 or 20 years, you end up dredging the pond again, as you probably know because it infills being an engineer and you're an engineer. And it's a huge expense to the taxpayers for private projects. So I think, and just fairness to all the taxpayers in the City of Dublin, it'd be good if you guys could put that back into your project. We would like to get that out of the city's bailiwick and?
We also have had some underground storage solutions. You know, they're off Kaufman Road recently. You know, they were required to do underground water storage, which requires, you know?
We're just starting to have a lot of problems with this and it's starting to add up and we're, we're heading into a deficit year, so.
I think we're fine with that, really, it was assistance. Staff really thought that's the direction they wanted to go, the city controlling the pond, so I don't, we don't really see that.
Yeah, you've got two engineers. You're an engineer, he's an engineer. I'm sure you guys are going to engineer this thing correctly. So, you know, in the future, that might be minimized over time.
Yeah, and as we, quite frankly, as we design it, we know we're maintaining it, we're going to design it so it's, we don't have to dredge it every, so.
Exactly, and we're getting into that right now. And we've tried everything from the straw to get rid of the algae to the, all these expenses from all these experts from all over the country coming in, talking to us. Mearfield has had that same problem and it's getting really expensive to try to keep these ponds functional. They're beautiful, don't get me wrong, but they're expensive when your water jet goes out and you've got a new set out there and?
Okay, all right. Any other questions for these guys? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for coming in. We will see you back on January the 8th. I make a motion to waive the council rules, board to address ordinance numbers 90-18 through 95-18 together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Ms. Grums?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Anne, if you could just please read the property owners and their addresses.
Ordinance 9018 is Emmanuel Sanchez Carballo in Yucco Sanchez located at 6169 Cara Road. 9118 is Mary Jo Ryman located at 5526 Cara Court. 9218 is P. Michael Hauser and Judy Fay Hauser, 5504 Avery Road. 9318 Lynn Gray, trustee of the Lynn Gray Irrevocable Living Trust. This is at 5544 Avery Road. 9418 is Karen M. Sharp and Michael R. Sharp, 5555 Avery Road. And 9518 is John D. Kormanick, Sharon L. Kormanick located at 5527 Cara Court.
I will introduce all those ordinances. Paul?
Members of council, you have before you six ordinances for the acquisition of right-of-way and easements required for the tunnel crossing Boulevard Extension Avery Road Improvements Project. These are from six individual property owners, one of which is located on Cara Road, two on Cara Court, and three on Rings Road. I want to clarify what I reported to you previously. With these six, there are 45 total properties involved. With this six, this will bring us to a total of 21, now resolved after the five that you approved previously on November 19th. That leaves us 24 yet to date. Total cost of the acquisitions just to date is just over $400,000. We are tracking about just under 4% of the fair market value presently, so, but through these, this, or through our acquisition agent, we have come to mutually agreeable terms with these six property owners. I won't go into the details of the acquisitions. I know that's in your staff report, but I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. But with that, staff does recommend adoption of these six ordinances at the second reading and public hearing on January 8th of next year.
Any questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on January 8th. Thanks.
Thank you.
Introduction, public hearing on resolutions, resolution 70-18.
Authorizing the city manager to cooperate and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route 161 from just east of Riverside Drive to the Sawmill Road intersection in Dublin.
I will introduce it. Megan?
Good evening, members of council. ODOT has an urban paving program whereby they fund 80% of the cost of resurfacing state routes within municipalities, and the municipality is responsible for funding the remaining 20% as a match. ODOT had reached out a few months ago to staff, letting us know that they planned on resurfacing the area of Sawmill headed east over to 315 interchange in Worthington. Staff requested that they extend those limits further to the west to the roundabout, which would essentially complete the paving of all of 161 from our western limits to our eastern limits within just a few short years of each other, which is a great thing. They agreed to do so. So this resolution is documenting Dublin's contribution for the portion of the paving that's within the Dublin Corporation limits only, which is 102,000. That's the estimate as of this date. ODOT plans to bid the project next summer and they require this resolution demonstrating our cooperation and agreeing to the funding contribution prior to their bidding of the project. So with that, staff recommends approval of this resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I have one quick one. Timing-wise, let's hope they start on the west first so that they don't get in the way of our bridge opening, or what's the timing-wise when it comes to our big bridge opening? So that we don't have construction on 161?
The exact timing of this project, this is very early on. They just programmed the project and they're just planning the design and the bidding. So we still need to work through those details. They don't typically like to develop the plan set and work through all those details without having this resolution first. So once this resolution passes, then we will start working through those details with ODOT on the exact timing and how they'll plan to attack the project.
Can you massage, I mean, if it looks like, because as I was reading the timing on it, it looks like it could start once you get all the okays, because you've got the contract here with this ODOT. Can you massage when?
We definitely will have influence into how they will set up the project, contract documents and all that.
It's not just our authorization, there's numerous entities involved in this.
Yes.
Or at least a couple.
Yeah, they'll have to get resolution from Worthington as well.
Okay.
Megan, in the memo, I noted that it said the city was responsible for their share and that the city, the city, meaning Dublin or Worthington, whatever, would be responsible for any improvements, any curbs, any, what do we anticipate, ooh, sorry, related to that?
So the general arrangement is the 80/20 split, and then as we work our way through the design process, and if staff identifies additional work that we would like to add to the project, so say for example, ODOT determines that curb or other work isn't necessary to complete the project, but Dublin staff says, yes, we would like to address that situation as part of the project, then we have that conversation with ODOT staff and we'll determine what those exact costs might be as we continue the design process or as we develop the plans. As of this time, we aren't aware of any specific requests that we're going to have, but, you know, that'll all be vetted as the design progresses. So we'll, you know, as we document the agreement later on, then we'll have those costs identified.
Is there any discussion about putting, making it more like the rest of Bridge Park with respect to pavers and granite?
On 161, that wasn't contemplated.
No, it's part of the-
Part of the resurfacing.
That's a good answer. Thank you.
So what dollar do we have in the CIP for this in 19?
So these funds will come out of our street maintenance fund. So the dollars that we have identified next year for street maintenance, since this is street maintenance, maybe?
Any other questions from council? All right. Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Resolution 71-8.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation through Drive Ohio for the connected vehicle roundabout application project.
Megan?
Good evening. In early October, we briefed city council on a portion of Dublin's smart city strategy as it relates to smart mobility arena. We shared a few of the opportunities we've identified, independent of the 33 smart mobility corridor efforts that we believe are unique and will lead the way in the smart mobility area for Dublin. This resolution is related to a project that we identified, an opportunity that will research, develop it, develop and test connected vehicles and as far as a roundabout application goes at the State Route 161 and Riverside Drive Roundabout. We believe we will be the first in the country to work with a roundabout application and this will be the first connected roundabout in the country. We envision the application will connect, collect driving information of vehicles circulating in the roundabouts such as speed, location, and critical headway. And that information will be used to help approaching vehicles, decide whether and when to enter the roundabout on the basis of calculated gap acceptance. We've been in discussions as we were formulating this project and putting this project together. We initiated discussions with Drive Ohio, which was created by the governor to serve as a statewide center for advancing smart mobility about partnering on this project. So that's been, those discussions have been ongoing for a few months. They've agreed to partner and contribute up to $80,000 to this project. So we've formed that partnership. And this agreement will memorialize that funding commitment. We plan to issue a request for proposals very soon to initiate a competitive selection process for a team to lead this project. And design and pilot deployment of the application would proceed in 2019. Staff recommends approval of this resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Kathy?
Yes, thank you. At various smart corridor meetings, I've heard discussions that Dublin has, is thinking about five potential intersections to do smart mobility over the next couple of years.
So those five intersections that are likely being discussed in those meetings are associated with the 33 smart mobility corridor effort and the ATC MTD grant. So there are five intersections planned to be connected as part of that project.
Could you share what those are?
So we've been looking at the Avery-Muirfield corridor and we're getting ready to pilot and outfit two of the intersections on the Avery-Muirfield corridor. It's perimeter loop and perimeter as part of the ATC MTD grant project.
So this is-
This is entirely independent, this is Dublin's project, independent of the 33 corridor grant effort.
I think what I'd add, if it's okay, is that we're really trying to, by leveraging dollars this year that we had in our capital budget, additional state dollars as well as dollars going forward in the capital budget. We're trying to get a continuity of this corridor all the way from 33 at Dublin's western limit all the way in to and through the 161 through the historic district and across the river to this roundabout. And then bringing in the Avery Road corridor. So if you could picture that and leveraging all these different dollars and agency dollars together is the end state that we want to try to achieve. So we're an integral part of that whole, kind of what we call the, that connected playground.
So you say leverage this year. So this would be, this would be appropriate in 18 funds, this $300,000 and wouldn't be part of the 19?
Yes, the Dublin portion of this project is planned to use the 2018 capital funds.
And there wouldn't be any additional in 19 for this, do we think? Or is it too early to tell?
That's not currently anticipated, but this is a research project. So we'll see how the research goes and how the application development goes. And currently, our estimate, though, is 380,000.
The other thing that I know we have talked a fair bit about is this is certainly going to generate data, a lot of data. So I looked through the agreement. It speaks to a variety of things, but it doesn't yet speak to the use of the data, the collection of the data, the sharing of the data. And I know we've had discussions about this at the IT. So what is our thinking going into this and what should or could we have in that agreement to protect the taxpayers and the, you know, et cetera? Thank you.
Great question. I'll field that one. It's kind of a council of government's board, kind of a role right now. And there is ongoing dialogue through the various committees that we mentioned that are ongoing within the grant, within the grant deployment, as well as the connected, Marysville connected Dublin initiatives and then the council of government's oversight. Point of that being, there's a lot of dialogue about and discussion and ongoing, actually, I'll say ongoing discussion and negotiation between the COG as one body and ODOT and USDOT relative to how the grant stands up and the sharing of that data and then versus how our data with separate projects would function. So really philosophically, the way we're looking at it is if it's involving the grant dollars, those, that data would be shared because that's in shared among the entities participating. For those projects that are above and beyond that, that Dublin is funding on its own and or separate, because remember, this is a bigger playground than just autonomous vehicles and connected vehicles, that that's data that we would, as a city, more or less garner and then determine how we might share that or not going forward. These same discussions are happening with, like with the Smart Region Task Force as well and how the data is going to be handled. It really made a lot of progress this last year.
Yeah, so my question is, we're starting to sign agreements and it's silent to some of that language, or this one was that I saw, or maybe-
It is. And really, the sequencing of this is about getting, I call it the playground, so forgive me for that, but it's about getting the infrastructure, the playground built first and then how we're leveraging that, how we use it on top of that. So this is really very sequential in those dialogues and the memorandum of agreement and understanding that have to follow behind those.
Yeah, I just keep thinking that, you know, the farther down the go, the more agreements that we, I mean, I think we just need some resolutions, some placeholders, some, something because this is now becoming real, which I'm very excited about. I think this is a terrific opportunity for us. I just continue to say, we need, we need some, we need some language in this sooner rather than later just because it's now starting to happen and once those sensors are in, we're-
And you bring this, and I thank you-
And I bring this up multiple times.
No, I mean, thank you for continuing to bring it up. I mean that. And that, and I just want to assure you that that's really right here. I mean, we're right. We know that that has to be the next step once this playground is constructed.
So you're saying, Dana, that there's a future value to this data that's possibly sellable?
Sure. And I, Kathy and I have talked about this quite a bit. I'm a big believer that, you know, the future of data is very important as it is to business, it is to local governments. And that there needs to be a lot of policy. And there is policy discussion happening at the local, regional, state, and federal level. We just provided comments to USDOT on a number of things related to connected vehicles and their policy today. The COG did as a group and as individual members and, you know, how data is managed even at the federal level and the policies and legislation that's put in place at every level. We're trying to stay right on top of it, so.
Okay.
I think it's important too because when you, when you talk about the return on the money that you spend at $300,000, which we're just a preliminary development, by the time you do final design, construction, acquisition of right-of-ways, project construction costs, you could be $2, $3, $4 million into a roundabout, connected, connected roundabout, which is, which is an investment that you would hope for the taxpayer who says, well, it's nice they have a connected roundabout, but what do we get back from that? That we really do early on. If $80,000 is from Drive Ohio and that $80,000 allows them to share all our data, do we want their $80,000?
So that estimate, the 380, just so you know, is based on the entire scope of the research design and the deployment of the infrastructure. So it's the whole project.
So I guess the policy question, it comes up back up again, is that if you say that if it's share, if it's, if someone contributes money to it and it becomes then shared data, or if they don't contribute money and then it's our data, which would you prefer it to be?
Yeah, and we've wrestled with the same policy matter at staff level anyway, relative to Dublin and fiber optics, where we have been very careful about where we've allowed state and federal money to be spent within our own conduit and fiber optic system for that very reason. We want to retain the ability to sublease, leverage, and use fiber optics and not be kept from doing that by federal or state rules. So it's kind of the same model with this, although this corridor is a little bit different in that we're all trying to play very well together and absent the USDOT dollars and a lot of the state dollars. A lot of this probably wouldn't be happening. So it is very focused in terms of what we're trying to do in partnership with them specifically. But the things outside of that, we're being very cautious about in terms of how we step forward on that. So I only bring all that up because it's very similar to the broadband and how we've managed that from that perspective. So it's a great point.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the other portion of the agenda, motion to waive competitive selection process for the appointment of deputy chief of police. Dana?
I'll tee this up. Thank you, members of council, and then Chief and Homer can chime in here. This has to do, as you mentioned, with the waiver of competitive selection process for the position of deputy chief. As part of the police department's multi-year strategic plan, we did identify the need to extend our accession plan as well. This was a plan, this plan does include the creation of a deputy chief of police position. And this position, as you know, was contemplated and incorporated in the 2019 operating budget. The position of deputy chief will provide for those opportunities that we outlined in the memorandum that was in your packet. Chief on Eggersberg, Homer Rogers, Director of Human Resources and I, excuse me, have discussed this position, the processes to fill it and with whom to fill the position. And based on the information provided also in the memo, and assuming we appropriately answer any questions you might have, I would respectfully request a formal waiver of the competitive selection process by motion for the new position of deputy chief of police. And should you be amenable to that and do that, it would be my intent to appoint Lieutenant Justin Pis to this position. And the information about Lieutenant Pis is also included in the memo that I referenced. And the chief, the director, Director Rogers and myself certainly are here and willing to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Well, I guess it's a two-step process, right? We waive it and then your decision to appoint Lieutenant Pis. And so I guess I would comment, it seems as though there's justification for the waiver, so I'll make that motion in just a second. But I've also interacted with Lieutenant Pis and he is top shelf. We could search to the ends of the earth and we will not find a better qualified candidate than him. So Chief, your grooming of him over the years has been an excellent choice. I'm fully supportive of that. Does anybody on council have any comment before I make that motion? I make a motion that we waive the competitive selection process for the appointment of the deputy chief of police.
I'll second it.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Thank you.
There you go. Development site plan, Riverside Crossing Park. Claudia, you're back up.
Hello again. I am here for Jenny. We had been worried about broken bones. It's only a sprain on one of her clumsy children. But I am here for you tonight with this Riverside Crossing Park East Plaza and Pavilion. And you are looking, based on the bridge code, at a development plan and site plan application. And as you remember, you have seen this throughout 2017 and 2018, all along as we have been going through the development processes. Outlined here in yellow are generally the geography of that park on the east side, which will include the landing of the bridge as well as the pavilion, as it is just across Bridge Park Avenue. And council has completed step one, which is the basic plan review earlier in 2016. And we are combining steps, really two and three, which is a development plan review and site plan review into one step, which is what you are reviewing here tonight. And in May and June, council obviously has reviewed this application and several questions were asked. Additional input was requested and there was a public meeting then there in July, which a lot of the comments that we have compiled in your materials that you have tonight in front of you dealt with what we have made into these buckets of 14 items. And Mr. Irman and Mr. Woods are here as well to talk you through a lot of those details and show you a video. But in terms of the planning process, what we are asking you tonight is to do two things, which would be the approval of one waiver, which has to do with the retaining wall onto which the pavilion sits. And that is a retaining wall height of 14 and a half feet, as well as approve the development plan and the site plan with the parking plan, as you recall from earlier this year. And then we will eventually also have to process an application for a plat and rezoning because a lot of the geography of the park is within right-of-way currently. That was vacated as part of, as part of Riverside Drive moving. But eventually, you would see this application come before you here in the next few months. And with that, I'll-
Good evening, mayor and members of council. Just a couple of things that I'd like to emphasize here. First and foremost, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank this council and previous councils for all the input that we've received thus far through our Architecture Review Board and our Planning Zoning Commissions. Also, all of the hundreds of comments we've received from the public. You'll recall back in May and June, that was one of the things that this council wanted to see, is a little bit more time spent with our general public, our residents and our stakeholders, just to make sure that we haven't missed something here. I think in the end, we have hit a much better project, so I wanted to thank you for that. So with that, you know, there are a lot of enhancements that have been made, some of which we had discussed at our CIP meeting. The video has disappeared. Bear with me. So what I'd like to do this evening is just show a video of all those enhancements. I think a picture sends a lot of messages versus me going through slides and explaining to what they are. So what you see here is the latest draft of this video, which is resembling the site plan as it is before you this evening. This is a coming across pedestrian bridge towards the east, approaching the Upper Plaza. You'll see the enhancements to the waterfall feature there at the staircases. Take you down to the shared use path, heading north along the edge of the river there. And this will take you to the accessible area for the river that is on the northern edge, as well as one of the more secluded types of niches that was requested by many. You'll see some enhancements here to the pull-off area so people can take advantage of some of the overlooked areas with enhanced wall features, landscaping, benches with wood-like finishes with a see-through railing. And you'll notice here on the left, as you venture down to the more intimate space, there is an actual area to access the river down to the right there. Now we'll venture up towards the east there, up along what we refer to as the promenade. This is the enhanced wall there is along Riverside Drive. You'll see the extensive landscaping there with the walkway that currently exists, which is what you see in front of you there, with pergolas and formal seating areas with staircases and a variety of different landscaping options leading down to the lawn space area. And you'll see a little play area there, a naturalized play area for little ones, which is very visible by benches and areas for parents to oversee. You'll see the pavilion there with the wood siding finish that was discussed. Some enhancements made to this landscape area to address some of the, I think the word was starkiness of it. We added some wood features to the bench areas, as you can see there on your right. One of the things you will not see in this site plan is the fire pit features. Staff has explored that option and considered it to be a little bit more of a safety concern that we were comfortable with and obviously a maintenance concern as well. So we- So we excluded that from the final site plan. Direct to the right, you can see the tiered seating, which ventures down to that area by the large waterfall feature, and then the secondary waterfall feature here along the lower plaza, along with some formalized seedings. And you'll notice some addition of trees that are adding some shade to the site. We do have one fireplace feature, which is an enclosed fireplace feature. As we approach the pavilion, you see this on the column there on the right. Pardon my voice. I hope I can make it through this. And then as you traverse down towards the south side of the plaza, you'll notice that there was an addition of a secluded sitting area with some enhanced landscape. And ventures down to the southern part of the shared youth path confluence there. And then you'll see there's an overlook here, which also serves as a vehicle turnaround area. As you will note, as we come back up north towards the pavilion, the old mountain is a little quick, but you'll see that there's a maintenance side door that will house all of the maintenance equipment for this park underneath this plaza, so that it's not in So with that, I'd like to also make special note to John Woods, who's here with us this evening from MKSK. His team put this video together for us to help render some of the illustrations with this site plan. So with that, we'd be happy to take some questions.
How about a comment of Bravo? That was fabulous.
I feel very confident that we really hit it.
It's so nice, and it's just massaged with all the little details. And I do think that the public had really great input on this, and I compliment everybody for letting them speak about it because it produced a much, much better result.
I agree.
Yeah, I went through the list of the comments today from, and Jane and I were at the session. You, I think, incorporated, I can't say all of them because there were some in there that, no, but I can see those comments play out, and it just feels great. I noticed even the food truck showed up, right, this time? They're excited. This is good. I think it's a, it feels warmer, I think, it's effort, so thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything? John, you got anything? Michael?
Just a quick, I don't want to be a party pooper on the food trucks, but I do know that some of them make a whole bunch of noise. And we have the bench areas and the eating area very close. Is there a way to regulate that, or is there a way to make sure we don't have food trucks that have generators that are running at a zillion decibels? Sorry.
I'll certainly refer to our legal team, but I would imagine that we would have every ability to permit or not permit different types of uses that are serving public property.
Right. If we're dealing with public property, we obviously have ultimate regulation of that. We've talked about food truck regulation in the past, just for citywide, and we have not taken steps to...
Some of the residents in Bridge Park have complained about the noise that they make out in front of Penn's Mechanical and so forth, so I've heard that, you know. And some don't make any noise, some make a whole bunch of noise. And that seating area and that area to eat is very close. I would think that could be disturbing when you're trying to get a more serene riverfront kind of look, so.
Well, and Mike, not only that, it's also a matter of blocking the sidewalk when there's a lot of people there, because you have to assume the food truck is going to face such that it's going to be, the people are going to be queuing up on the sidewalk, not from the street. And that area could get blocked. So it's just something we need to think about as we move forward and figure out how we want to manage that.
As to the fire pits, I just would add that I've, in my business, we've had a lot of suits come out of the fire pits in areas that you wouldn't even think would be a problem, you know, in adult-type restaurants and so forth, where people fall in them and then the suits come and they're big.
Matt, we had...
You got anything else? You done?
No.
Chris?
We had talked some about materials, particularly the closer we get to the actual bridge. We don't have, we're not approving material kind of things at this point in time. This is more of a site plan and so forth.
Right. The site plan will basically illustrate what we have here tonight, which is, I think, where we are with most of this. It ranges from 25% to 45% design drawings. We'll take this, if approved this evening, and take that to construction drawings. But if there's any portion that this council would like to see as we develop those types of materials and so forth, we'd be happy to bring those forward.
It looked like we had thin-cut stone on the retaining wall underneath. Is that accurate?
I'll let John talk a bit about some of the finite details.
John Woods with MKSK, 462 South Mudlow Street. That would be a thicker veneer. It's at least four inches thick.
Right. But I mean, it's not a full dimension stone. It's a thin, or it's a cut stone on one side, maybe a split on the...
The backside would be cut or split.
Front would be more of a roughly...
But it's considered a thick veneer at four inches. Thin veneer would be more like inch and a half.
But it is stone.
It's stone.
It is not a synthetic material.
Right.
Good. And then we had talked at length about the handrail above that that would be adjacent to the, to the bridge, that handrail kind of material. It looked like we landed on something that was, looked very high-quality from the video.
We will certainly bring that forward if that's something that you would like to see when we get to that finite detail.
And just at that point there, because I think the materials right there are going to be so important, you know, auxiliary materials won't be nearly as critical as they will be right there. So, thank you.
Anything else from council?
Just one more little point when you say about bringing something back. The arch of the maintenance garage, you had spoke earlier about having that have a look that looked like it had some sort of a piece of history to it, and the way you dress that. You still thinking about going in that direction with kind of a different change in the way that stone arches over that piece, or...
Yes. There's a contrasting stone material that wraps around the arch. It's called coining. It's still limestone, but it's in a more finished cut. So it's reminiscent of the images that you see in the package, the historical images, where you have a rough-cut stone next to a more, a rough split stone next to a cut stone.
I think this wall, as you mentioned, Chris, I think this wall, as you come down there, and it addresses the river, and it sort of, it sort of completes this sense of history that kind of ties it all together when you're walking down that path. And to see that piece of archway done in a way that speaks to Old Dublin or parts of the old quarry that existed on the river, I think is kind of significant, and it kind of gives a little bit of a roots and a foundation there on that wall. I like that, so.
It needs to look like it's an old cellar entrance or something along the lines, similar to what's at the Arts Council there, of those old cellars that come into the ground.
Right. Especially since it's coming up low from the ground and it rising up to all the newness above. I think it does give it this sense of deep roots of history in that piece of topography there and that piece of land. Be great. Congratulations again on this beautiful design.
I just want to thank everybody for, what has this been, five years, four years?
Okay.
Since we started this?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Has this been a five-year program or a four-year? How long have we been on this?
Since I was a teenager. No, it's been, just feels like it.
We started designing in 13.
In 13. So it's really been six years. But anyway, congratulations and thanks to everybody on this.
Thank you.
This is going to be iconic. This will be, this is going to be Dublin, the symbol for Dublin.
Thank you. I would just, just want to make sure we're clear that this is final development plan. From this, we will launch or continue to launch design. While it does speak to the promenade, I know in the report, we mentioned that is not funded. That piece of it is not funded yet. Basically, everything else, you did fund in your capital budget, so we'll cover down on all those other aspects of the park as you saw it here tonight. The one thing I would like to just make sure I'm clear on is relative to finishes, I want to make sure we're, you know, responding in a satisfactory way on that, sort of a checkoff point for that. I wouldn't want to get much beyond, I'm going to pick a number, 30%, 32 and a half percent planned production. Can you guys give me a point at which perhaps we could just list back to council some of those finishes to make sure we're validating that before we launch any further? If that's okay with you, unless you feel that's not necessary and that was answered tonight.
Surprise, I'd like to see them.
I figured as much, which is good. I mean, it's fine. Happy to do it. I just want to make sure what's the right, right point.
Obviously, each component of this will take on a different speed by which it'll be designed. So as things progress, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking if we're at 45% today, probably at around 70%, we'll have a little bit more understanding of what these materials are going to look like for the majority of it. I don't want to get too far down the road and have to back up. So when we reach that point of needing some input, we'll certainly bring that forward.
And I'm going to, I'm going to take the liberty to bring it as needed, too. So we may check in a few times if necessary, so we're not speeding up, slowing down, backing up, and so forth. But there needs to be a point at which we'll say, okay, we got it. But thank you for the feedback. It's very helpful for us to be very clear where you want us to go, so.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the one waiver regarding fence walls and screen to allow the proposed 14.5-foot wall. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Anne?
Sorry, Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Anne, I make a motion to approve the development plan and the site plan with the parking plan with one condition, as set forth in the agenda.
I'll second it.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
That should do it, right?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Staff comments?
Thank you, members of council. Just a couple of members out of your for-information-only packets. I need guidance on a couple of matters. One has to do with the competitive selection process for the professional design services for the council chamber project we're referring to it, which is council chambers and associated spaces as part of the new city hall. Staff is in the process of drafting the request for proposals for the professional, these professional design services. And in order to select the architect through this process, we're putting together a selection team. And I'm recommending at least two members, preferably two members of council, participate in that selection process. I would like to emphasize that that's just for the selection process for the architect. You will all have significant input to the design process itself once that architect's selected. So I want to make sure there's no confusion there. So just if you agree with that and could provide, again, my recommendation is two, but I'll leave that up to you.
Well, and we talked about this at the agenda meeting, and so this is the team that's going to pick the way we pick the architect.
Correct.
Not, does it have anything to do with the building itself?
No.
Okay. So, and at the meeting, it seemed to make sense to me for the mayor and vice mayor to serve unless somebody else has a desire to serve.
I mean, in selecting an architect, you might get some flavor and so forth when they come in and present the different architectural firms. Not that they'll have the answer, they shouldn't have the answer, but you'll get a sense of style and so forth. So just if you've ever been involved in one of those processes, that's the kind of thing you'll get.
That's what I'd suggest, unless somebody else has a desire to serve in my place, they may.
Is that your motion?
To you guys. I guess I would make that motion, then.
I'll second it.
Anne?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Is that it, Dana?
One more item. We do have a memo that Assistant City Manager, Michelle Crandall, put into your packet about the Intelligent Community Forum Conference in 2020. If I could just give you a little bit of background and then ask for your guidance on that. There's over 400 communities a year from across the world that apply to be assessed by the Intelligent Community Forum against their six key indicators. And from that list, they select what they call the 21 Smart Communities. And from then that list, then they identify the top seven communities, and then from that list annually, they identify the number-one community in the world. The city of Dublin's been a three-time Smart 21 community and a two-time top-seven community. Columbus was named subsequent to Dublin's recognitions as a number-one intelligent community. The key indicators include broadband, knowledge workforce, innovation, digital equity, sustainability, and advocacy, and these have served as a key component to our own economic development strategy over the years. The city of Dublin launched its own institute of the intelligent community to help facilitate the understanding of the intelligent community movement here in Ohio. And we are only one of two institutes in the world. The other one is in Taiwan, and a third one is being formed among several communities in Canada. Dublin's Institute has conducted seven workshops with 399 attendees, consisting of 270 cities and organizations from Ohio and from Canada. We conducted six roadshows around Ohio with 214 attendees, consisting of 151 cities and organizations represented. And then we have conducted two focused regional workshops, one for the Zanesville area and one for the Findlay, Ohio area, with 39 attendees and 27 cities and organizations represented. The Dublin Institute has assisted other cities to self-assess against the ICF's six key indicators. The city of Hudson was just named twice last year and again this year as a Smart 21 community and a, one time as a top-seven community, waiting to hear the outcome for this year. And then the city of Westerville, you may have read, was just named a Smart 21 community just a couple of months ago. And we did have a role in assisting them through that process. The city of Dublin has the opportunity to host the Intelligent Community Forum's Global Conference here in Dublin in 2020, and we provided a memo to council in your packet about this. Staff recommends serving as a host of this conference, which will have over 200 people from cities and organizations from around the world. And at that conference, that year's announcement of the number-one intelligent community will be announced at the conference. So it goes beyond the attendees. It's also who's watching from around the world and the other continents. And focus will be on Dublin for that. So that's kind of an exciting opportunity. There is a licensing fee. $10,000 of this is due at the time of the contract, and we can encumber those funds out of the 2018 operating budget to pay this. The balance will be due in 2020, which we would budget for at that time. Sponsorship dollars will be raised, excuse me, to cover the cost of the conference, not otherwise covered by conference fees. And that's estimated to be about $100,000. So these can also be recovered and are paid for through, for the licensing fees as well through any sponsorship dollars that we can raise. And we would do that. We would raise sponsorship dollars to help fund or offset the cost of the conference, and assuming we could even try to recover, you know, the entire licensing fee itself. We would garner these commitments throughout 2019. Anything we would come up short, we would budget for 20, the 2020 operating budget, but our goal would budget zero and to raise the sponsorship funding. We do have experience in doing these. We've done them before for professional associations at a national level here in Dublin and have had success with those. The city of Columbus, because they were a Smart 21 number-one in the world, they hosted the international conference here a couple of years ago. Some of those folks are still around and involved in our institute and would be helpful in helping us to raise sponsorship funding and to organize the event itself. So with that, Assistant City Manager Crandall is here as well, would be happy to answer any questions you have. What I'm seeking by motion is for council support of this conference and the authority for me to execute necessary agreement with the ICF, should we be selected. And I just want to emphasize, we haven't been selected yet. They're looking for a commitment.
Any questions from council?
So Dana, who attends these?
Yeah, so generally, they're attended by members of the ICF from across the world. We'll have people come here from pretty much all the continents around the world who are members of ICF. So their cities primarily are members, but then you get a lot of other organizations, a lot of technology-type organizations because of the indicators and what the intelligent community about, is about, like leveraging broadband, how do you use it, how do you acknowledge workforce, all those things I've mentioned. And so that attracts a lot of technology users and watchers. So not to mention, it also attracts vendors and the like that play in this world of broadband and all things broadband. And in that, the connected corridor will make great strides next year. If you think about in 2020, I think it'd be a great opportunity to leverage that as part of this because that is certainly one of those, certainly a significant project, economic development program that is leveraging off broadband. Without broadband, none of that works. So we think it's a great, great timing effect as well.
Any other questions from council? I make a motion that we support the ICF conference being located here in Dublin and we grant Dana with the authority necessary to advance that goal.
I'll second.
Second.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Vice Mayor Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Is that it, Dana?
Other than to say, I just let me close with this. I just want to thank, this is our last council meeting, and I just want to thank all of you for your untiring dedication to this role as city council members and all the great effort and time that you put into the city of ours over the course of this past year. Thanks for your partnership on behalf of staff. And I also want to just take, take, take a moment to say thanks to this great staff we have and all the great work that they did in 2018 and how excited we are, which is very excited about going into 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Committee reports finance. I think we go to Christina, do we not?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Mike. We had a great time talking about the hotel motel tax grant awards. So thank you, Kathy, for all of your input. You have a memo in your packet outlining all of our recommendations. Just something to note, the budget for this is $200,000. We had almost $231,000 in requests. So we had some discussion and did the best we thought that we could do. You'll see as part of the finance committee a little bit later on in the council committee reports that Kathy and I had a discussion with Matt and staff about talking about how we create that budget, that $200,000 budget. Are there some different ways that we can tie that budget to some other factor to create more or less space in that budget as, as would, would be necessary? So that's just a follow-up discussion that we'll have in the new year. Kathy, did you want to?
It's been $200,000 for quite some time.
It's been for four or five years, something like that?
Which was the, the, yeah, the genesis of.
Exactly.
Why that number and, and we're generating more. Is this the appropriate number?
Right. Well, the time value of money dictates the $200,000 today is not worth the same thing as it was four or five years ago. So it's just, it's worthy of a discussion from a policy perspective.
What I would note, you guys came in on budget.
Yes, we did. We came in on budget.
Does that surprise you?
Coming from the three of us, that should not surprise you.
Oh, it does not.
So I'd like to make the motion that we accept the bed tax grants as we have laid out in the memo in your packet.
I'll second. That's a motion?
And?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Thank you. That's a lot of work. Thank you for doing all that. P and Z. Jane, anything else from finance? Mike, you got anything from finance?
Looks like they want to try and schedule a policy discussion at some point. It may be something we can put into the goal setting along with all the other policy discussions.
Yep. That it, Christina?
Yeah.
Jane? Administrative Committee, Chris?
Yes, you would have seen an email come out from Ann last week regarding the relocation of our retreat from February 7th and 8th to the 21st and 22nd. Ann has indicated to me that no one let her know of any conflicts. I know that there were some scheduling things that were yet to be determined, but there were not any conflicts. And I'd just like to confirm that that be the case, and if so, we will reschedule our retreat for the 21st and 22nd of February. Is that accurate? Okay. Ann, if you could please make that change on our calendar, I certainly would appreciate it. If you have anything that you specifically would like to be dealt with in our retreat, please notify me at your earliest convenience. I'm meeting with Dana, is it Wednesday, I think? Tuesday? Wednesday, Dana and I are going to get together and we're going to begin the process of laying out the agenda. So if you have an item that you would like to see on that agenda, it isn't a final agenda. You know, it'll be circulated to all of you for your feedback, but we're going to start assembling those. If there's something specific you want on it, please let us know. We do have interviews for ARB and Planning and Zoning Commission. They are going to be scheduled the week of December the 10th for those interviews. We are awaiting some applications. There is a possibility that the application deadline might be extended. If so, we will let you know. But please keep an eye on your council calendar for those times to be set. There were a couple of placeholders put on there. We're awaiting verification on that. Those are the two main items and that's all I have.
Thanks, Chris. Community Development, John?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
Finance is all the way down here. We already covered that. Public Services Committee, Christina?
Yeah, we have a meeting on the 5th of this month. We'll be hearing from Helen Lessick about the potential for a public arts plan, and so I will bring that back to council in January.
Thank you, Christina. Coda, Kathy?
Uh, nothing to report. Thank you.
Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
Uh, they have, their next meeting is scheduled for December the 6th. I unfortunately am unable to attend, but I will look for the meeting minutes and reply back anything that is pertinent to this body.
Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Uh, we did meet last month with the Greater Columbus Sister Cities, has their holiday gathering. It's on this Thursday and I have to do the RSVP pie today. So if one of you does want to attend that, please let me know before we leave tonight and I'll send off the email. Otherwise, we will have our next meeting in January to plan our goals for the coming year.
Warpsy, Chris?
Uh, executive meeting on the 6th and board meeting on the 13th, so I'll have more information at our next time together.
Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Uh, nothing to report. Thank you.
US 33 Innovation Corridor, Kathy?
No, we meet next week, I think. Thank you.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Seasons greetings from the Dublin Arts Council.
Dooley noted. Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing.
And our friends from Washington Township are here. Mr. Richter, chief, you guys got anything for the good of the order? Same to you. Same to you. Counsel Roundtable, Jane?
Just one thing. I serve on the steering committee for Dublin Bridges. And they are reorganizing their steering committee to have representatives from a variety of different entities that represent the city. Washington Township, Dublin City Schools, Welcome Warehouse, the Food Pantry, Centero, the community foundation and Rotary. I've served as an ex officio member, but they're asking that we have an official city member. And I just want to run this by council to make sure that there's no problem with that. We do report on many of these others and I intend to stay on as the steering committee. And so just want to make sure that there's a, that that's agreeable to council to represent the city.
Go get.
Great cause.
All right. Great. They've done some wonderful things.
Yep.
Will we need a motion or appointment, Ann?
They're requesting that, or I don't know if their bylaws or if that's that formal.
Let's just do that so we make it official if we could. I think that would be good to. I move that Jane BR appointee, ex officio appointee to the Dublin Bridges.
I'll second.
Ms. DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And you'll forward them that documentation?
I will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Kathy?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Jane, for doing that. Just a couple of things. Thanks, everybody, for a great tree lighting celebration. I'm sure it wasn't the coldest one ever, but it was pretty chilly out there and there was a lot of staff out for a long time. And it was just awesome. It was really well done. So thank you to everybody. Quite enjoyable. I want to thank Jenny, Judy and Ann for helping us go to what I call, what is it? Go paperless 2.0. So we're piloting board pack. I don't know if you've all had a chance to, to play around with that. I probably am guilty of bringing that forward. This particular tool to help boards is something that Coda uses and city of Westerville has used for a while. And so I know over the, the next few weeks, they're asking us to give some feedback. Not that I know that much, but I've been using it for a little while. So if people have questions, that'd be great. And it really is, I think, flexible. So I appreciate all the help. And I think we'll, we'll end up with a, a tool that'll be, I hope, easier for everybody to use. I'm, I'm hearing on the admin side, it's.
No, Jenny's doing a great job, so I can't.
I just figured out the, the other system.
Yeah, we just figured out the last.
Just really figured out how to move stuff around and do it. So.
Here we go.
So what, what, what would your plan be from, would you abandon both? Would you abandon the, the one we're doing now?
We're, we're doing this parallel system for now. We think that this will work best for you long-term.
But when do you do away with what we've learned already?
In the first quarter, maybe, hopefully.
First quarter?
As soon as you're comfortable.
Mike's looking for fourth quarter is the right answer in his mind.
Mike, it's, 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 it's not that dissimilar, honestly, from what we're doing. But I think it's, gives us a lot more flexibility. So hopefully, so.
Give you use for any, any device, which is.
Yeah, even the phone. It works on the phone. And then I know I'll, I'll speak for Jane being a newbie. I want to thank everybody. The end of year one, it's hard to believe that. And I appreciate all the help. I know I've asked a million and 10 questions and then I asked the same one twice. And I appreciate that. And it, it takes a lot to onboard new council members. I know that and everybody has been fantastic. And I will tell, and I, I tell people that ask me, well, how's it going? And I said, I am so impressed with what happens in the city. I was before. But really, when you get a chance to really see all the great things that happen, it, it really makes you feel great about living here. And that's been fantastic. So I appreciate that and I wish everybody a very happy holiday. So thank you.
Nothing.
John?
Mayor, thank you.
Michael?
Just the top of the holiday season to everyone.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
Form holiday greetings to everyone. A big thank you to staff for a really great year. A lot of changes and a lot of willingness to have open discussions, which I very much appreciate, as well to my fellow council members. It's been a total pleasure getting to work and to know the two of you as well as to learn from some of my more seasoned colleagues. And I very much appreciate all of you. And thanks to our fantastic citizens who put us up here and they really make all of us look good.
Thanks, Christina. Chris?
Uh, the only thing I have is thank you all for allowing me to spend a little family time. I missed our last meeting. So appreciate all the hard work you do and it's so nice to be able to go away and know that, that all's right on the home front. So thank you for extending that to me.
Thanks, Chris. And I, I guess I would just echo the same comments to the, to the staff and to my fellow council members. My respect grows for each of you every single day that I have the honor and the privilege to sit in the seat, as does my pride in this community. It is something that we all can be very, very proud of. This is a fantastic place. And I will just echo the, the saying that it is simply better in Dublin. So with that, happy holidays and we'll see you next year.
Hey, Newt.